Good evening and welcome to the July 24, 2018 City Council Special Meeting of Mayor Debbie Burtland. Hold on just a moment.
Just a second.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Nope.
Nope. Can you hear me? Testing. Ally, do you need a couple of minutes?
Yeah, I think so.
I'm sorry. Okay, 6:02, 6:05 we'll try again. But I had said 6:05. Are we now committed to 6:05 or can we go ahead and start? Okay. Thank you for your patience. All right. Good evening and welcome to the July 24, 2018 City Council Special Meeting of Mayor Debbie Burtland. Will the Assistant to the City Manager please call roll? Yikes. All right. I'm gonna go down the line this time. So Councilmember David Wiesentiner, Councilmember Bruce Bassett, Mayor Debbie Burtland, Councilmember Benson Wong, Councilmember Tom Acker, Councilmember Wendy Wyker, Deputy Mayor Saleem Neese.
Here.
So just a quick note to all those who are watching. We have Deputy Mayor Neese, who's actually on holiday in Europe, who's calling in for this meeting, so it's about 3:00 AM. A sign of dedication, so thanks, Saleem. We appreciate it. So with that, our first item of business is to approve the agenda. May I have a motion to approve as presented?
Subtle.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion passes and the agenda is approved. So tonight, we have an item of special business, and that is to recognize the 2018 recipient of the Flash Family Inspiration Award. And for that, it's a pleasure to welcome Cindy Goodwin and obviously, our 2018 recipient.
Good evening, members of the council and members of the community. The Flash Family Inspiration Award was begun in 2009. It was founded by the Flash family, Phil Flash. He was a member of the community. He was an artist. He was a community activist. And each year, this award honors a person 55 or older who exemplifies the spirit of good sportsmanship or civic engagement and who does so with a positive attitude and serves as a role model to other people who volunteer. And this year's winner or recipient is Marsha Servis. And it's really a double pleasure to acknowledge Marsha tonight for a couple of reasons, and that is because Youth and Family Services in my office gets to see her every week because that's part of the work that she does. And I was talking with her about it and saying, "Do you know this award? And did you know Phil?" And she reminded me that she set up this award with Phil years ago. So it's really my pleasure and I'm happy to have Marsha come up and join the mayor.
And this is the fun part because I get to say lots of nice things about Marsha, which is very easy to do. So Marsha exemplifies the spirit of the Flash Family Inspiration Award through her many commitments to Mercer Island. Her nomination was supported by members of the community who walk with her at the weekly Soulmates outings or join her in numerous volunteer efforts. Marsha donates her time and her effort with no expectation for recognition, but rather to contribute to the benefit of the whole. Her leadership and optimism reflect the qualities the Flash Family Inspiration Award seeks to recognize. And congratulations to Marsha. Now, we have a few things. Many people will recognize this. Her name has already been put on the plaque recognizing her as the recipient for 2018. And one of the fun things about this award is that there's small gifts that recognize, hopefully, passions that are close to the recipient's heart. So with that, Island Books, that very well-known manila envelope that we all love, and REI. So we're hoping that this will contribute to two of those wonderful passions that you've also shared with the community. So Marsha, do you want to say a few words?
There will be a few. First, thank you to Youth and Family Services and the Foundation Board. I accept this with an honor, and I'm humbled by it because many people, including those present, give far more time than I do, I'm sure. But I'm blessed to be able to give back to my community and the people in my community in some small and hopefully, meaningful ways. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We're gonna go in. Because I've learned that the family should be here.
Oh.
You're holding on.
I'm holding on.
Because it's you.
It's me.
It's you. Families, come on in.
Your doll or not, I am. And I'd like to thank all my mates that are here.
So this will be hanging out here. Well, that pretty much wiped out most of the audience. So with that, next up on the agenda, we have the City Manager's Report, and welcome City Manager Julie Underwood.
Good evening, council. I wanted to provide you with a quick update on some of the activities that's happening with Sound Transit. So the headhouse construction at 77th Ave, Phase 1 of the steel erection is complete. Next, they'll begin pouring concrete deck slabs, and then Phase 2, they'll actually install the steel erection. And then escalator and stair install will happen later this October. So you'll actually start to see, right there, the actual headhouse being constructed later on this fall. Let's see, platform, they're preparing the concrete slab again later this fall in November and December. And the track, you'll see initial rail welding will be complete by October. The place ballast east of the station will happen in August. The install track on the East Channel Bridge, also in August, and then the install track, they'll install the track in November. At the Park and Ride site, we also have some changes. Sound Transit is currently negotiating a contract for initial on-call contract to evaluate the operational needs of the King County Metro for 77th Ave and provide up to 30% of design. They expect an RFP will be issued in 2019 to complete the design and construction. Also, the Park and Ride lighting retrofit project is actually complete. I believe there's one fixture that remains that needs to be fixed. And then, let's see, there are also pedestrian and cyclist improvements at the Park and Ride frontage. They're currently awaiting approval from the Sound Transit Capital Control Board. Some other aspects about Sound Transit is the Mercer Island Boat Launch. So this week, trucks are temporarily using this. So August 6, the work site and the fencing will go up. There's approximately 60 stalls there on the site, and about 15, that's the furthest parking stalls away from the water, will actually be used for construction staging. There will be times that they'll have to use nine additional stalls when they need to reroute traffic for overhead beam work. And overflow trailer parking is available at City Hall on weekends.
Julie?
Yes.
Does that read Mercer Island Boat Launch is closed the week of Seafair? Or when it says temporary using, isn't that Seafair Week? The only reason I ask is it's kind of a big deal for a lot of folks.
That's not my understanding. I think--
The fourth is, I think, a Friday of Seafair. So fifth, sixth is a Sunday.
Right. So August 6, I think, is a Monday following Seafair.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, I think Julie's giving us updates, because I asked her about it in one of our meetings, but that overhead stuff that you were just talking about, does that apply to-- I didn't, it wasn't my understanding that that was for the East Channel Bridge, too. Is that post-tensioning for the East Channel Bridge as well as the floating bridge?
I need to confirm that. I'm not, you know, I'm not 100% sure on that.
I was looking underneath the East Channel Bridge, and there's a huge platform structure going down through the center that they put in, and they're doing some type of work, and I was just curious what it was.
And there is going to be some overnight post-tensioning closures proposed this coming weekend, but there are no major planned I-90 closures aside for some ongoing ramp closures. Near Ave demolition is planned to occur during three weekends in October, and this is mostly going to impact Seattle traffic. Additional outreach, approval of construction noise exemption by the city. This would involve notifying properties within 500 feet, and there are five specific project areas. They've received mail, they'll receive a mail notice of off-hours nighttime work. And nighttime work is expected to be relatively quiet, but about the same noise level as background traffic, but, you know, it's possible we may still receive some complaints about that. And that's all I have about Sound Transit at the moment.
Julie, I have one last question on that.
Sure.
The, we've gotten a lot of emails on who's maintaining the foliage along the Sound Transit corridor, and there, I was looking at the trees, there are a lot of dead trees, and we've gotten some emails on that. Are they or are we going to take them out?
I think that's part of the Aubrey Davis master planning.
Yeah, it's part of the Aubrey Davis master planning, but I know that there is, there are some targeted trees that will be taken out later this summer, early this fall.
Yeah, I just worry they're so tinder-dry that they're always brushfires along the--
That's right.
--major corridors.
Yeah. And that has been brought to our attention, and we'll address it. The Mercer Island Arts Council will be presenting the Puget Sound Sumi Artists. It's Japanese-style black ink painting. We're featuring more than 50 original works, and the exhibit runs through September 7 at the Mercer Island Community Center Gallery. So you're invited to meet the artists at an artist reception this coming Thursday from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. Also want to remind the community that MICA's second, and second All-Ireland Community Visioning Session is taking place this Saturday, 9:30 to 11:30 at the Community Center. It will involve brainstorming, a collective vision for the future of arts and culture on Mercer Island, discovering unmet needs relative to the arts, identifying programming and activities that would benefit the whole community. And they will also be providing childcare. Also, just a reminder, Seafair Weekend is happening in August 2 through the 5. It will involve I-90 closures Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So, and again, no farmer's market on Sunday, August 5. Local artist Rachel Holloway will begin work on Monday, August 6, on the West Mercer Way mural. The artist and her assistants will install temporary scaffolding on the sidewalk to paint the mural. The sidewalk will be closed to pedestrians, and the adjacent street lane will be closed, coined off during the production, and it will last through the end of the month. So the project is one of many that's funded by the city's 1% for public arts programs. And finally, there's been a lot of questions about the timing of the public hearing about the comprehensive plan amendment updates. So we wanted to let the public know that the public hearing will actually start on August 29, but will continue through September 5. It'll be, those public hearings will take place here at City Hall at 6:00 PM. We will start online outreach on the 15th of August. Of course, we're taking email, written comments through September 5. So proposed amendments include policy discussions related to the Strom Jewish Community Center, French American School, Herschel-Nur-Tomid, critical areas protections, transportation level of service updates, arts and cultural updates, and some others. So the amendments are, will be posted on the city's website in early August, but if you're looking to see what those are, they're described in the July 18 Planning Commission Packet, which is available online. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Julie. So our next item on the agenda is appearances, and this is the opportunity for anyone to speak to City Council on any item. When it's your turn to address council, please be sure to speak audibly into the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. The expanded rules of engagement are back there on the back door. So with that, is there anyone here for public comment? All right. Seeing none, public comment is closed. We now move on to regular business regarding the second reading and adoption of the levy lid lift ordinance, and for that, we welcome City Manager Julie Underwood.
Good evening, council. So this evening, we have before you the second reading of the proposed levy lid lift ordinance. Again, want to remind you, the problem is Initiative 747, which limited property tax increases to 1% per year. Of course, over time, that 1% limit on the city's largest single revenue source, 41% being on the property tax, has really created a structural deficit, a structural imbalance, making it difficult to maintain current service levels. I'm going to ask, I'm gonna ask Luan Tuttle to help explain some of the math and some of the work that has happened since providing you the agenda packet this weekend until now. So there have been some changes. We want to walk you through that. But basically, as you all know, over the six-year period, 2019 to 2024, there are structural deficits projected in the general fund as well as in the YFS fund. And that amounts to, over that six-year period, roughly $20 million, a $20 million gap that we're having to fill. So some key assumptions that went into the forecast, I want to point out, is 2% property tax growth in 2019. So this includes 1% new construction and the 1% council optional increase. Also, 4% property tax growth in 2020 to 2024. This includes the 1% construction, assumes the 3% annual growth factor in the levy lid lift ordinance. We combine the beautification fund, no utility tax or BNO tax increases assumed in this, and we are assuming that voters would renew the parks MNO levy. So all of that is built into the base forecasts. One of the things I want to, I think I really need to point out, based on our conversation last week, is initially, we interpreted the state statute as the annual growth factor would be applied to the levy lid lift. In consultation with Pacifica Law Group, it is actually applied to the total levy. And that had actually modified, really, our rate, levy lid lift, the rate and the amount needed. So with this, I'm gonna ask Luan to come up and help explain the math for you. And I believe all of you have gotten this in advance, so.
So Luan Tuttle, your accounting manager, stepping in for Chip, who is on vacation. I'm just gonna sort of walk you through Chip's math and sort of how he got to this latest version of the levy rate. So I'm gonna switch to an Excel worksheet. So again, this is Chip's sort of worksheet. I'll try and sort of walk you through what his assumptions are that led us to the bottom line. On the very top of this worksheet, it starts with what are the deficits that we're trying to fulfill? The numbers are a little bit different because, again, we're baking in that 3% over the whole levy as opposed to just on the levy lid lift. And what we end up with in this sort of top section is the gap that we're trying to fill for an annual average of 3.4 million per year that we would have to collect in order to get that 20-some million by the end of the six-year period. And what went into that are these key assumptions which Julie just went through, which is basically, in 2019, we would apply the 1% optional property tax, that's the council's option, plus a 1% sort of new construction growth that Chip talks about a lot. In the subsequent years, so 20 through 24, he's building in both the 1% for new construction plus the 3% that comes with the levy lid lift. And that's where we get to these revised bottom-line numbers, being a little bit different than what you've seen in the past, where the deficit in the seventh year was closer to 7 million. So in restructuring how that annual growth factor works, this is the dollars that we had to get to under the new structure. Is that clear? And then basically, we take that, that annual average of 3.4 million that we need to collect over the six years and say, now, how do we get there? And that's how he determines the rate that you see down here. So in smoothing the rate over the six-year period, we have to start with a levy of 2.38 in year 19 that increases 3% per year, or an average of 3.4 million per year over the six years. So see, this number is basically the same as this one. Does everyone see that?
Benson?
Luan, just clarification. You know, on the 4% property tax growth for 2020 through 2020-- through twenty twenty-four, do you not factor in the one percent council optional increase?
So again, the one percent council optional is effectively replaced with this levy lid lift, where it goes from not a one percent optional, but a three percent overall. And I think originally in the agenda bill that went out, there were some, there was some variables or some variances from that three percent, and it was kind of like the math that both council member Benson and Bruce pointed out was some, it goes from three to four to two. And so what we've done is sort of taken a closer look at it with Chip's help on the phone today. And he had some assumptions baked in there about fully funding the contingency fund. And we've backed that out and put it basically just at, what do we need to get to, to maintain service levels? So truly is now at a three percent per year increase, and that's what this reflects.
I just want to clarify one of the statements you made when responding to Benson.
Okay.
Councilmember Wong, sorry. The, I thought I heard you say this effectively replaces the one percent. And I want to know exactly what that means. And does that mean that going forward, if this levy passes, the city council would be restricted from asking for an additional one percent year over year if the council feels like they need more money?
You would be authorized, if this levy passes, to go up to not only just the one percent, but up to three percent. So the one percent optional plus additional two, to a maximum of three percent as stated in the levy as that inflationary factor.
So the three percent is the cap, and you couldn't go to four?
Correct.
Thank you.
So that's sort of how we got here, and the impact is, sort of this middle line here is, as stated, to address the deficits, basically by smoothing it. What happens is you end up collecting a little bit extra in the first couple of years to cover the deficits in the out years. So that's what this next section is, is showing sort of both the deficits, which are pulling from up above, up here, as compared to the levy dollars that would come in per year, based on what's highlighted in yellow, to get to sort of this annual surplus deficit over time. And what you see is by the end of the six-year period, the levy, as stated in this sort of yellow highlighted section, will bring in twenty point four million to cover the deficits with barely a little bit of surplus. So you shouldn't be left with any indication that we're collecting more than we need. It is exactly sort of what we need based on what we know today.
Benson?
So, you know, and this is maybe for the city manager as well, but I know, you know, there's concerns, and I think we all have concerns, that so we're going to be collecting more money in the early years and banking it, I guess, for the outer years. How do we protect ourselves from ourselves and also staff as far as making sure that we've bent that money so it's going to be used appropriately in the outer years?
It's your levy ordinance, and I'm sure our city attorney can explain it. Your levy ordinance restricts you to only spend those monies on those services.
Dave?
So, thanks, Luan. And Julie, this may be a question for you. I'll try and articulate it well, but I'm not sure I can. So we, we backed away from correctly provisioning and funding the contingency fund. Right, so we had, we had this seventeen percent coverage that we were shooting for. Did I misunderstand? Are we backing away from that seventeen percent target?
No, you would still be able to, I mean, over time, we still would need to provide some efficiencies, some savings to hit the seventeen percent target. But in essence, you can use, we believe, assuming this passes, you can use those reserves and those fund balances to get to the seventeen percent target.
Right, okay, so we're still on track for that. And I guess, I thought we were going to get to a point this week, and maybe it's later in the month, that where we were going to talk about where some of the efficiencies would draw from that would, so we sort of have our proactive plan of how to, you know, the seventeen percent was a target so we could accrue savings against it, right, so that we have built-in cost reductions in there. And did I, did I misunderstand, were we going to not try and itemize sort of what those, what those reductions would be in order to fund that? Again, I apologize for not articulating it very well. I think you know what I mean, though.
I think I do. If you recall the model that Steve provided, Management Partners, in the out years, and again, that model assumed a five percent annual growth on the levy lid lift. When we're applying the three percent on the total levy amount, it actually helps us bridge the gap for better. It helps us actually bridge the deficit. In his original model, we weren't able to bridge the deficit. We were going to have to find some, I mean, about a ten percent reduction of some kind efficiency gains. I still, I mean, it's in the ordinance, plan to address those through a fiscal sustainability plan. But you're correct in pointing out, there's no concrete target on what to address at the moment.
So I'm going to ask a point of clarification. My understanding is, as we go into biennium budget planning, that we are assuming that the levy does not pass. In that case, in the fall, we will be identifying what those likely cuts would be.
Well, right, yeah, no.
Okay, so I'm misunderstanding them.
At your mini-planning session, you did provide us with direction to balance the budget using some of those one-time fund balances and reserves. That being said, we still, we still have to make about four hundred and thirty-five thousand in cuts in twenty.
So it would be as discussed there, but in addition, the four hundred thousand as yet unidentified, but generally outlined in previous agenda bills, where you've provided some bullet points.
Yes.
Wendy?
So Julie, could you tell me, there's been talk about a capital levy coming after this one. Could you articulate the difference between this levy and what might be coming down the road? So we're super clear on what the plans are or needs will be down the road?
Right, there's no doubt that we do have growing capital needs. I mean, you can just walk through Luther Burbank and see the tennis courts need resurfacing. You can see tons of needs out there. This doesn't address that. This really does address operations. It addresses funding over the six-year period, public safety, parks, recreation, right-of-way maintenance, code enforcement, addresses our basic services. The capital needs a future council could consider, because you do have a capital bond out. It's the fire station, which sun sets in twenty-one, which sun sets in twenty-one. You could consider evaluating whether or not you want to ask the community to renew that and fund some capital needs. I think that was around, is it nine million, ten million? It was, do you, I don't remember, five million, thank you. So five million, granted, we have more needs than that, but that could be something you can consider in the, in the future. But this levy only includes operations.
So could you tell me how this operations maintenance would interact with the existing parks and rec levy?
The existing parks and rec levy, it's my understanding, covers, it's just under a million, and it's about seven hundred. A large amount of that goes to actually really maintain Luther Burbank. And there's about two hundred, two twenty-five that funds some minor capital repair and replacement at Luther Burbank, so.
It is a little bit of history. The operations piece on the park levy was also replacing an expiring levy from when King County handed over Luther Burbank to the community. So it was very much a Luther Burbank oriented initiative.
And it's twenty twenty-three for that one?
Yes. That's the one that is built into the forecast as, about nine hundred thousand is built in as we're assuming that revenue is going to be there. So it may not, honestly. I mean, right now, this is, this is balance making some assumptions, right? It's assuming no recession, it's assuming voters will approve the parks M and O in twenty twenty-three. We would, if you, if the council does not consider a capital levy, our taxpayers will see a reduction in, after twenty twenty-one overall, so, because that capital levy goes away, so. Any other questions?
Any other questions right now, or? Benson?
I'm just going to follow.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, Saleem?
So the three percent becomes a councilmatic vote each year, is that right?
That's right, you're authorized to go up to three percent, but you don't have to take three percent.
Does that create a budgeting issue for us, knowing that the council has to vote for it when we get into not this coming biennium, but the following biennium? So what I mean by that is that the council needs to vote on it two times during that, that budget cycle. Can we assume in the budget cycle that the council would vote for it?
Well, if voters pass this, I would assume they would want to honor what the voters want, but you're correct. I think that creates some risk for the city, but you could, this, he's, you're right. I believe that's true. I.
Do you have anything to add to that?
And then the next question is, can any part or all of the three percent be banked? And if so, for how long? Like, can it be banked beyond the six-year levy?
Yes, Luan's saying, yes, it can be.
Okay, thanks.
Benson, then Wendy?
Actually, I had a question, it was a follow-up to council member Wyker's question. As far as the, just clarification, so the existing parks M and O covers a lot in terms of Luther Burbank. So the monies that would be raised by this levy, that would go to the parks M and O, that's for other things, but can you sort of elaborate on what those other things would be? I mean, we're not duplicating things, I guess.
Oh, gosh, no. We wouldn't be duplicating things. The parks and rec budget, I'm remembering, is over five million dollars. What percent of that is revenue generated, about half? Little less than half is revenue generated, so there's still quite a bit more. And as you know, recently with the open vegetation, open space vegetation management plan, you know, we're seeing those costs rise, and maintaining kind of the ground we've made is, is really, I know, important to council. So this would help us maintain the ground we've made.
Wendy?
So the language in the ordinance changed again sometime today. Could you explain why the code compliance services and right-of-way maintenance was added to the ordinance?
Yes, so let's talk about that real quick. So the, as per council direction at last council meeting, there was a recognition that code compliance and right-of-way median maintenance, which would be funded by this levy, was omitted and should have been included in the language. So this calls out specifically, that's a service that this levy would help to maintain. Also want to point out, so we corrected that to add that language. We weren't able to add it to the ballot language, so it is in the actual ordinance, whereas. In addition, council pointed out that there was some confusion in the ballot language regarding parks, because we listed parks, trails, ball fields, and they pointed out, we needed to distinguish, no, 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 those are for maintaining those assets, not for building new capital. So we modified the ballot language to make that more clear. So that, those are the changes. We added and improved, I believe, some of the whereas recitals to improve the timeline on when the city really were embarking on addressing the fiscal challenges. And in addition, you'll see the levy lid lift rate and the annual growth factor are also all adjusted down. And again, we're now correctly applying the annual growth factor to the total levy amount and not just on the levy lid lift amount, which is how we had initially interpreted the statute. And all of this comes in at less than twenty-five cents and less than three hundred dollars.
Follow-up, so where is the language in the levy lid lift language that reflects the parks and rec change?
Let's see. If you go to the.
In today's version, by the way?
Yeah, look in your, in your packet, yeah. If you read under the actual ballot language, and it says, this proposition, that second section, sustain current levels of police, emergency, mental health counseling, safety net, park slash right-of-way maintenance, and recreation services. So we really lumped trails, playgrounds, ball fields, under parks, maintenance, to meet that seventy-five word count. And then you'll see, we also modified it, Carrie's pointing out, she's right, on, in section two, council member Wyker. Section one, I'm sorry, section one, we say the main, after, we provide funds for police, emergency services, mental health counseling, safety net services, the maintenance of parks, trails, playgrounds, and ball fields, and recreation services. So that's where the council pointed out, we needed to change that. So we made that change. Yeah, I think those are the, those were good changes. And then, again, we were really trying to meet the seventy-five word count in the ballot language, and our outside counsel, Pacifica Law, helped us with that.
Tom?
I actually didn't have any questions tonight, but now I have like three or four. Under the key revenue assumptions, the parks M and O levy lid lift is renewed in November of twenty twenty-three. What is the assumption of the rate that it will be renewed at? Is it the same as what it currently is, or is it going to reflect future projections which are realistically a lot higher?
I think we're assuming the same rate.
Why would we assume the same if we think it's going to be higher?
I think it's going to be, but I think for planning purposes, we wanted to just simplify it and assume a renewal of what's existing today.
I think we should look very closely at that, just because the survey data says people move here for parks and schools and stuff like that, and we, you've already mentioned that we have critical needs in our parks. So I, I think that we should be realistic in our forecasts related to that. With, with permission, Mayor.
Sure.
The, in the agenda bills, pretty consistently, it's recognized that since twenty fourteen, the structural deficit has been known to the city. And throughout the agenda bills, we've referenced off and on throughout the language that we'd be developing a sustainability plan. I've also heard that there aren't any cuts that can be made. Pretty consistent messaging without going into services. Will the, will the, we have to prepare a budget regardless of what happens to the levy. Is the sustainability plan that you're looking to develop going to be shared with the council when your no levy budget comes forward? And this is kind of parlaying off of council member Wiesentiner's thoughts, because it triggered some things in my head. So is that the first time we'll see the quote sustainability plan?
Actually, the council, we, we haven't really talked about the timing of the fiscal sustainability plan. The question I, I really have for council to think about is, is this a fiscal sustainability plan that I try to fund this, in this year's budget and kick it off in eighteen? Or really fund, fund it, find a way to fund it in the nineteen budget and kick it off in nineteen?
I can only speak for myself, but I think that we, as a council, would be remiss if we didn't ask that to be a high priority, if we've known since 2014 that there's been a structural imbalance and we haven't addressed it. We have to turn the corner at some point and start looking at it, so I think we need to...
Well, I think the council, I mean, you, many of you were here, the council has addressed it, frankly. I mean, they've instituted a utility tax, because remember, we spent down some of those contingency funds to balance the budget, and they've done some, I think the city has done some things, identified the criminal justice fund, we weren't prohibited from spending that. I think the supplanting language, I think that was an issue, but that is not an issue, so the city was able to use those funds, so I think...
I guess I'm looking at it a little differently. I'm not looking at the, where we can get more money to fund things, I'm looking at how can we work smarter and sustain our costs, because we know that salaries and compensation is about 80% of the budget, so how do we do that? And I'm just trying to figure out when we're going to see that, or is it built into...
I would beg the council to consider having that be our 2019 work plan, just because it is a budget year, and so, I would want to kick it off at the end of this year, after the budget is adopted, but I, just from a work plan standpoint, it's the same people that are doing the budget that would be working with our consultant on the fiscal sustainability plan. Consultant Management Partners hasn't given us a scope yet, so I am still expecting to receive that, and I will share that with council as soon as I receive it. And I can also share with you some of the examples of sustainability plans that they've prepared for other communities, so I'll forward that on to council, too.
Okay, Bruce?
I'm going to ask the question, frame the question, although really, Tom, I think, has asked it, and you've sort of answered it already, but that is, I think you're exactly right, the financial sustainability plan is an important element of what's been determined here by the council, and the intent to execute that internally or in conjunction with our external sources is key to all of this. The timing is something that I think we, as council, ought to be looking to staff to advise us as to how it can be meshed together with the rest of the things that they have to do, but from a standpoint of council, I think it's, we've been clear, and I think we should continue to be clear, that it's an essential element of what we're looking for from staff. Julie, as I say, has already kind of answered it by saying, we think it ought to be next year, and personally, you know, given, having been through a number of budget cycles and recognizing how crazy they get for staff, my inclination would be to be supportive of that proposed schedule, rather than trying to jam it in here in advance of that, but that would be a question for the full council.
Here we have Dave Benson, then Wendy.
And, this is just a point, to make sure I'm reading last week's versus this week's, and I have all my, for those folks that are saying, boy, the numbers sure change on this, and it's hard to keep up, to completely understand that, but in reality, the millage rates on both the high end and the low end have decreased ever so slightly, but they've gone down. So, the numbers have changed, but not even by a half a cent, and they've been all downward. Okay, thank you.
Benson, then Wendy?
I'm going to see if, maybe this is a middle ground, obviously, everybody who's spoken...
Are we asking questions?
We are asking a question, okay. I'm sort of putting it in the right context, getting a little, you know, okay, thank you. But, I think you've heard it said, as far as the importance of this financial sustainability plan. Also appreciate the comments by the city manager. Is it possible, though, for the city manager to prepare at least an outline as far as what the timing might look like, not the plan itself, but basically to provide the council kind of a schedule from here to there, that will, again, underscore the importance of this plan, and provide the community at least an idea of when it might be reviewed and, you know, basically, put before the council for adoption, so, really, just a timeframe.
Absolutely, I will work with management partners on their scope and making sure that they include a timeline in that scope.
And you think that's something that can be done next couple of months?
I talked to Steve, and he asked if he could have more time to deliver the scope, because he got pushed on another project. Let me circle back with him, he was due to give me that soon.
Okay.
Yeah, let me do that.
Great, Wendy, and then we'll pause and see if Saleem has any questions.
So, speaking of timing, it seems like we've changed this discussion every week for the last couple of weeks. Every time I come in here, the numbers are different, the language is different. I know on a timeline to try to get this through in August. What is the possibility of extending this through February and taking the time to get the numbers right, get the language right, get some more community input? I understand we only had four public comments at the public meeting last week, and nobody showed up tonight. It's the middle of July, this is very complicated work. What would it mean to push this off to February?
Well, a levy lid lift can only be on a August primary or a general November election.
So, August of next year would be the next chance.
Yeah.
Saleem, just wanted to take a break in the questions from the day, do you have anything that you'd like to ask?
Not so much a question, but, you know, follow along, maybe to Councilmember Akers' point. Now that I look at it, with the revision in the annual increase, which becomes councilmatic to the levy, that levy in totality, if it passes, at 3%, you have a number of things working for you towards efficiency. You have, the council could vote for it or not, so if things came in, if the forecast came in better than projected, the council could approve and bank some portion of that amount at a lower value. You also have a forecast that we're solving exactly for, which includes no headcount gain, and then we are going to develop a financial sustainability plan either way, pass or fail. That's going to be something that we have to build. So, I have a lot of confidence in what I've seen and the roadmap that we're on, that we will find a solution to a sustainable financial future. This levy, I think, is a critical component of that, but it doesn't give me pause to look at this and say, well, what are the details? Can I see them now? I think a timeline would be important, and I'm sure Julie can get that together, given management partners' timeline, but that'd be the only thing I would have.
Great, thank you. Carrie?
Good evening, council, Carrie Sands, city attorney. I just want to clarify, because I think there's been some misunderstanding that's developed over the course of some Q and A on this levy ordinance this evening. So, the proposition language that's on page nine of Exhibit 1 to your AB 5457, which, there's a discrepancy, I note on the first page, it says 5458, but in any event, this ballot proposition would set the limit factor for years two through six, 2020 through 2024, at 103%. That 3% is not councilmatic, as I heard Deputy Mayor Nice describe it just now. It would set it at that rate, and if the voters approve this, that will be the rate. That needs to be clarified.
So, it's not optional, it would be...
No, it will replace the 101% limit that otherwise applies and is a cap under state law, as a result of Initiative 747.
Get Bruce?
So, the question was also asked, does the council, and I'm stealing your thunder here, but I'll ask it, does the council then still have the ability to apply an additional 1% or not?
No.
Okay, Tom?
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, Carrie. The, that means that when that rate is set, it's set, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So, Carrie, when I asked earlier about that being banked and that being councilmatic, all the responses I got were, yes, that can be and would be, that was all incorrect?
Yes.
Luwan is saying that it can still be banked, and I'm asking for clarification on that, because we need to get this right.
The dollars collected, because we're smoothing the rates over the six-year period and not tying to actual deficits, we're saying, we're going to collect the average per year, recognizing that we're collecting in the first couple of years more than we need in those years to pay for the future deficits in the out years. So, when you asked, can we bank those surpluses, that's what I thought I was answering, is yes, we can set aside those dollars collected in excess of the deficits in the first few years to pay for the deficits in the out years, which we would be required to do, because we can only spend those dollars according to the ordinance. Does that clarify?
Bruce?
Well, yeah, so, and I'm probably just helping Saleem a little bit here, there's two different definitions of banking than being used here. One, and we need to clarify those and make sure that we're all on the same page with those. So, one form is dollars come in, dollars go into an account, dollars are reserved there. The second is, we have not taken an available levy lid lift, we have left it for a potential future date to be taken, and we call that banking of that levy lid lift opportunity. So, the question becomes, what, if I understand correctly, then the, we are talking about banking dollars, we are not talking about the flexibility to bank levy lid lift.
You're right, that's correct, thank you for the clarifying remarks, Councilmember Bassett, I think you've accurately captured how it would work.
Thank you.
Hey, council, any further questions, or Julie, are you through your presentation? I see Bruce has questions, but let's give Julie a chance.
So, also this evening, should you approve the proposed levy lid lift ordinance, you would also have to appoint pro-con committee? And so, this list of the pro-con have been forwarded to the council, and so, that would be something we would be looking for your confirmation, and obviously, as soon as that's done, we would be contacting those members of the committee, giving them instructions on next steps, and basically, at this point, that point, they would be working with King County elections.
Julie, can you pause there, because there was also discussion about the need to appoint a lead within that committee? Can you perhaps, or Ali, provide clarification on that?
So, one of the three people on each committee will need to be the spokesperson, and the only purpose for having a spokesperson is to have one point of contact for King County elections to each of the committees. So, there's no other powers or anything involved in being a spokesperson or chairperson, they will just be the one contact person.
And how is that determined?
They choose among themselves who the spokesperson will be.
Council does not need to choose who the chairperson is? Correct, thank you. Benson, and then Bruce.
I'm sorry, can we just sort of go back to the contingency fund? Sort of didn't really talk about that, other than reaffirming that 17% target. Can you just elaborate, or just go through the bottom of the spreadsheet, and how we get to that 17%?
What's included here, sort of just a projection of where we would fall short in meeting that 17%, so the bottom line, where it starts with 22,191, those are Chip's projections on what he thinks, or where we're going to end up being short of meeting that 17%. And I think what we're committing to, or what the plan is, is that in order to get there, that's where your sort of financial sustainability plan comes in. So, we're not attaching levy dollars, we're not increasing the levy ask in order to meet contingency funding at 17%. What we're committing to is trying to find sort of the financial sustainability or cost-saving efforts in order to maintain the contingency funds at the 17%. And these would be the per-year goals that we would need to get to at a minimum, to sort of fund those at 17%.
Just a follow-up, so, I appreciate that, and then, on the bottom, we have, we talk about the estimated 2018 year-end. What actions need to be taken? I mean, you're making certain assumptions, and I guess, does that require council to take action to approve those transfers?
Correct, that's sort of just an example of what you could do with year-end, 2018, ending fund balances, should you choose to.
Sorry, just a moment, Saleem, apologies if it would be possible to mute. Thank you, okay.
Yeah, I mean...
My phone is on mute, so if you're getting feedback from somebody else.
Okay, sorry, sorry, Saleem, Chip, if you could mute.
I was like 3:00 AM, I'm sure Saleem is the only one up.
I was more worried, worried that we had just woken up the whole family, anyway, okay.
Yes, so these would all take council action to be able to do this, and again, it's just sort of Chip laying out, here's what's available, again, reminding you that these are contingent on the levy passing, because if it doesn't pass, these are where we go to sort of balance 1920.
Okay, thank you.
Bruce?
Actually, I was going to ask the same question, I was, wanted to make sure staff highlighted the fact that what we're not talking about doing is having the levy lid lift be the source of the dollars for the increase in the contingency fund, and rather that you're pulling together, pooling dollars from other, the other fund balances, which we've talked about, and Saleem's been the advocate for this, combining those fund balances into one spot, so there's more transparency around that, as well as using some of the surplus dollars that we have available for this purpose.
And if I could, mayor, point out one more thing about the contingency that is different from Steve Toller's model that he presented on July 10. So, he was factoring in that we would be using general fund monies to build up that 17% contingency. The change here, that I think is worth pointing out, is we're able to use interest to build up that 17% contingency. This is why you're seeing less. Now, granted, if the interest isn't there, that means our delta is going to grow higher. So, right now, we're seeing interest coming in around 200, and it's making a big difference, and over the six-year period, it's like 1.2 million, so it's a pretty significant difference there. That wasn't initially in that, which is why that deficit was so much bigger in Steve Toller's model as well.
Dave? No? Okay. Wendy?
I think this is a question for Carrie, wherever she went, maybe Julie. Since we changed the language and the numbers since the public hearing, do we have to have another public hearing, or are we in compliance with public process?
We're in compliance with state law, which only requires one public hearing.
Counsel, it doesn't mean that questions are over, but I would also be interested in entertaining emotion, if someone was so inclined at this point.
Actually, Mayor Bertin, I wanted to take a brief moment to provide an overview regarding election guidelines, campaign do's and don'ts.
Sure. So, we understand the implications of the vote. Sorry, okay, so, do you want to go ahead, Tom, or should we have Carrie go first on the election do's and don'ts?
Carrie, are you okay if I ask my clarifying question first?
Certainly.
Are we going to vote on these wherases right now? Is that the motion you're asking?
Well, there would be a motion, and the motion could either take it as presented, or there could be a motion that included amendments. Counselmember Akar, can you please speak in your microphone?
Sorry, my cord's tangled. I'll defer to you, Mayor Bertin, I had a couple of questions on the wherases, and whenever you think it's appropriate to address them, I'm happy to do so.
Okay, great. Why don't we have Carrie go ahead and give us a do's and don'ts? It's more of an information, from what I understand, than perhaps a point of discussion or debate.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you, council members. Going to provide just a very brief, high-level overview of campaign do's and don'ts, as they're often referred to. There are more publications available that explain this, the Association of Washington Cities and the Washington State Public Disclosure Commission, on their websites have additional information. But briefly, there is a particular state statute, which you'll see on the screen, RCW 42.17A.57... 42.17A.555, which is the main prohibition, and it states that council and staff are prohibited from using any city facility for campaign purposes. This is really broadly interpreted, the term "agency facility," as you can see, includes everything from stationery, postage, equipment, employee time, city facilities, vehicles, office space, et cetera. And so, basically, we say not even a paperclip. Not the city's email, not the server, nothing. There are a few exceptions, and I'll go over those next, but I also wanted to point out that campaign-related speech during public appearances is not allowed, and that is consistent with the RCW that is cited above. So as far as the exceptions go, there are three main exceptions that are also enumerated in that state law. The first one is the council, as a body, as a legislative body, may vote on a motion or resolution to express support or opposition to a ballot proposition if the following procedural steps are first taken. First, the notice for the meeting must include the title and number of the ballot proposition; and second, members of the council or members of the public must be allowed an opportunity, an approximately equal opportunity, to express an opposing view opposite whatever position the council's taking. You may recall that in 2015, this council voted to pass a resolution expressing support for the King County Best Start for Kids levy. So that's an example involving this council in the recent past. Another exception is an elected official may make a statement at an open press conference in support or opposition to a ballot proposition, or in response to a specific inquiry, and this is known as the media inquiry exception. The last exception is activities which are part of the normal and regular conduct of the officer or agency, and state law does allow the city to prepare an objective and neutral presentation of facts concerning the ballot measure, provided the voters are not directly encouraged to vote either for or against the measure. But that just lays out the facts, the city's financial challenges, why the rate is set as it is, why the growth factor is set as it is. Again, factually based is allowed. Voters may be encouraged to vote, to participate in the democratic process, provided they are not being explicitly asked to vote a certain way. And if the city allows the use of its meeting room facilities, then it must be done on a non-discriminatory, equal access basis to the public. So that's just a high-level overview. Again, there's a lot more information about the nuances of these guidelines. I would refer people to the public disclosure website, which can be found at www.pdc.wa.gov.
Okay, I think Benson, you have a question?
Two questions for you, Carrie. So, number one, use of a person's private email is okay, as long as you're obviously not using the city's email. But your private email is okay as far as telling people that you're supportive of a particular position, or--
It is allowed to use your private email. Again, don't use the city's server, use your private email. And I want to clarify that, if you are doing that in your personal capacity as Benson Wong, then there are no restrictions. If you're doing that as Councilmember Wong, then there are restrictions, and you can only stay factual and neutral in your presentation of information regarding a ballot measure, and should not, as Councilmember Wong, be encouraging people to vote one way or another. As, again, Benson Wong, private citizen, you can do that.
Okay. And then, this may seem a little silly, but when you mention, so somebody, right now, we could say that we're supportive of the motion. Can you say from the dais that if this motion is passed, and the ballot is on in November, can you say that you're supportive of that particular ballot? Or is that, I mean, I'm just wondering, you can say you're supportive of the motion, but should we not say anything about the ballot itself?
Again, as a private citizen, you may say that. As a councilmember, you may not.
Okay.
Unless you're asked--
Right, okay.
--under the media inquiry exception at a press conference, or in response to a direct inquiry. For example, if you're in attendance at a rotary meeting, and someone asks, "I want to know if you support this," then you can respond.
So even tonight, I'm sorry, I'm just, too much. I'm not going to--
Not yet.
So you can say that you're supportive of the motion, but we just cannot say, even tonight, as we're maybe, in a short, a few minutes, going to be taking a vote, you really can't say that I am supportive of that particular ballot measure.
So the way you phrase the question, I would expect each of you participating tonight, all seven of you, to cast some vote with regard to a motion that's before you. So that will be public, everyone will know how you voted, and that's obviously allowed. You may vote either in support of or against this.
I'm sorry, but that's different from--
In your question, your follow-up question about voting for the ballot proposition, when it becomes that, again, there's the media inquiry exception, and you have to follow that. When you are in your council manic role as a private citizen, you may express how you will vote as a private citizen.
Tom?
I don't want to put words in this whole member Wong's mouth, but I think what he's trying to articulate, and maybe what I'd like to have an answer to, because I was trying to track with what he was saying, is it is okay for a councilmember, prior to the vote being taken, to explain the rationale on why they're leaning one way or the other in a way of public discourse in an open and transparent environment, trying to sway our fellow councilmembers.
Of course, as with any motion pending before the council, the councilmembers, prior to casting a vote, may state their rationale that supports the vote that they plan to Any more questions?
More?
No, I'm done with my part. So now we're going to talk about timing.
Tom has another question.
Oh, okay.
Over the last, like, four years, email distribution lists have been a wide, spread topic. I noted in one of the emails that you sent me, and I was reading from an iPhone while I was sitting in traffic. Did I just admit to something? Yeah, I was parked in traffic, but the, I believe there was a statement that said something about the use of emails that were obtained in the role as a city council member, and that would be a violation. Is that an accurate statement? And should we refrain from using any emails that we have gathered from citizens who have emailed us in our capacity as elected officials?
So, in fairness, I don't know that you've accurately captured or rephrased what was stated in the email, but I'm actually reading from it right now, and in the context of the RCW, again, 42.17A.555, that does not restrict the right of an individual, whether that person is an elective or appointed public official or a public employee, to express your personal views, so long as that expression does not involve the use of public facilities. And what I went on to say in the email is, this means that elected officials and appointed staff may campaign on their own time, using their own supplies and their own equipment, such as personal email. And then I underlined, do not use your Mercergov.org email account or the city's server through a private email account. I'm not sure if that's the part you were referencing, but--
That was the part, so there is no, if a councilmember, can they, are those email addresses that they've collected in their role as an elected official portable to their private accounts to campaign one way or the other?
If you want to use an email list that you have created, you need to make clear that you are expressing your personal views, you need to use your personal email account, and you need to run it through your own server.
Thank you. I'm not planning on doing that, but I just, it's been a topic of conversation, and I know that as emails start flying in campaign seasons, people always ask, "Where'd you get my emails?" So I wanted to make sure we're all clear on that. Thank you.
Any more questions?
I wouldn't go far. Okay.
Mayor Bertin, I would move to adopt ordinance number 18-07, providing for the submission on the November 7, 2018, general election ballot, a proposition authorizing the city to lift the levy limit established in RCW 84.55.010 to sustain current level, service levels for public safety, youth, family, and senior services, and parks and recreation.
Second?
There's a first and second. Councilmember Bassett, would you like to speak to the motion?
Well, just briefly, I'll say that a year's worth of work has gone into reaching this moment where we are crafting something that I think the council will support, and that puts the question to the voters. It allows the public to decide how it feels about the service, the opportunity to continue services at the current levels, or the necessity of beginning to reduce those services over time due to the structural imbalance that we've, I think, staff's articulated very well, and has been a point of discussion for years now. So with those thoughts in mind, I think this is a perfectly appropriate question for us to be asking the public, and I won't go further in saying how they should vote, based on the conversation that we've just had, but I support putting it to them.
Great, okay. Benson, I'm seeing--
I'm going to vote in support of the motion. As Councilmember Bassett mentioned, I think after weeks, actually, for us, it's been weeks, but for the community, it's been months of deliberation, discussion, review, and, you know, the important thing is that we need to put this, and give the voters a chance to make a decision. And so I'm very much in support of putting this to the public, for them to, for the public to make that decision. I'm also pleased to see that in Section 1, I believe, of the ordinance, it really makes it clear what the intentions of the city council are with respect to making sure that there's funding for youth and senior counseling services, and that there be no reduction to those service levels during the next six years. And I think that's something that we've heard loud and clear from the community, and that's something that I think I'm very happy that the council has, is in support of that position.
Thank you. Dave, and then Wendy?
Sure. So I will vote in support of this as well. And, you know, two things really, really turned me on this. One, you know, we have a lot of feedback from citizens, not just from the survey results, that people are satisfied with the, with what they get from the city. They didn't move to Mercer Island to have the leanest, or the least amount of services available to them. And I think they, people continue to rate it very highly, you know, against our sister cities around the state. And I think, you know, the feedback that I've gotten, not only from some of the mass emails, but also as you talk to people one-on-one, is they want to continue to support that. And people, you know, someone who's oftentimes our adversary ran into this weekend and said it's the right thing to do. The other thing is, I think we took a great step, and thank you to the staff for all the huge work, and I think we took a great step in getting some validation on the numbers, because I think watching the CAG process, if you're not sure about your foundation, it's easy to say, are we really making the right decision or not? And I think validating those through a third party and helping us understand that while the targets get refined and refined and refined, we're not orders of magnitude off. So, you know, once we get that validation and you get the feedback from the public, I get it, nobody wants to pay taxes, and when I look at the tax bill that I pay for my house, and then you subtract the really small, you know, amount that goes to the city, I understand that our tax bills are high, and they constantly get higher, and if we add utilities into that, it makes it almost, it makes it almost worse. But, you know, the same person who was usually a detractor and was a supporter said, you know, I just, I look at King County libraries compared to what I send to the city of Mercer Island. So I think it's all relative. And the last point is, 747, I know that there's a lot of distaste for it. I think it is a good tool of governance that forces us as a governing body to explain to people what we want them to pay for, rather than just an open checkbook over time. And, you know, to channel a former councilmember's, that some things you just have to let people decide on, and there's, there are certain things that I think it's only, can be decided by the voters, and this is a great opportunity for that to happen.
Thank you. Wendy, and then Tom?
Wendy's got to go first.
Yeah, sure.
I thought we were going to talk about the agenda bill instead of giving preambles on whether or not we--
Well, they're not mutually exclusive.
--support it. And I just had a question on the wherethes, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th one, 6th one, and 11th one. I'm wondering why in the 8, agenda bill, we put in the whereas the May 2018 community survey, and there just, it kind of seems like marketing, and in the first one and the second one on the June 19, 2017, to continue to meet the high expectations. The survey data showed that this, we're actually declining in the expectations of the community for some of these services. So I'm wondering if those two should be stricken.
I'm sorry, which two specifically?
Whereas the May 2018 is the first one, and whereas on June 19, 2017, the second one. And then the third one, it's just a clarifying question, and it's, it begins, whereas the city council desires to address the ongoing structural deficit. And it specifically mentions the general fund, which I understand--
I'm sorry, Tom, just, so I can keep up with you. If you could just slow down and make sure we know where you are, that would be helpful.
So what I have is, right now, the two that you want to strike is Page 6, and then it says, whereas the May 2018 community survey, is that correct?
Correct.
And then the second one is, follows immediately thereafter, whereas on June 19, 2017, to continue to meet the high expectations.
Yeah.
Those are the two that you would like to strike.
Correct. And then the third one is on Page 7, and it's 1, 2, 3, 4 up from the bottom. I understand the statement--
Is that whereas the city council desires to address?
Yes.
Okay.
I understand the statement on the general fund, but it also brings in the youth and family services fund. Is that, I didn't know that there was, and this is a shame on me, I didn't know there was, I thought youth and family services was part of the general fund.
It is a separate fund, within the general fund, but it's a separate fund.
And is there a structural imbalance--
Oh, yes.
--with the youth and family services fund as well as the general fund?
That's correct.
Okay. That's the clarification I needed on that one.
Okay, so, did you want to speak to those, or are you looking for--
Well, I just moved to strike both of them. It looks like marketing to me, more than anything else.
It's a fact.
Well, but it's also a fact that we've declined in the services. So we're saying that we're going to sustain services, are we going to sustain services in a downward trajectory?
Mayor Bertin, we've got a motion, and I think the important thing is, so you're moving to amend the ordinance, and I think what we're looking for then is whether or not there's a second to strike those two clauses at this point.
Yeah, and the only points that I was speaking to is, it just seems like marketing more than anything else, and I don't think it gives the full picture, so.
Okay, do we have a second? All right, motion fails for lack of second.
And that's all I had on those.
Okay, so, all right.
Wendy?
All right. So I would say that we haven't been working on this for a year. I'd say we've been working on this for a few weeks. For the last four meetings, every time I've come in here, the numbers have changed, the language has changed, the purpose has changed. I was hoping a few weeks ago, we could be more specific about what exactly we're going to do with this money, and how exactly that math was going to work. I think in this day and age of rising property taxes and housing affordability being a top concern, that putting a big levy forward to voters is not the right thing to do in such a quick timeline. I don't know what the rush is to push something through that hasn't had enough public process, enough public input. We aren't doing what the CAG recommended. A lot of people don't know what we're doing. The math is confusing to us, even given this conversation we had tonight. We're building a no-cut budget anyway, presuming this thing is going to fail. I would like to propose we take the year that it's going to take to get the broad community support, to turn this into a very clear community conversation about cost savings, how we're going to save some efficiencies and do some cost containment, as well as why this levy is needed, and what this fiscal responsibility is going to look like with this new money. So if I could add an amendment to take the year that it's going to take till next August, to be really clear as a community, what we're asking-- to be really clear as a community what we're asking for, what all this math is, what all these spreadsheets are, what all of this confusing languages every time we come in here and changes, I think we'll have a much better shot at getting this thing passed. And if there's any chance of maybe including a few capital projects to make it even easier to understand what this money will be for, I think our community will get behind us and we'll pass it the first time. So all of that to say, I don't support where we are tonight. I would love to see if this council is interested in taking the time to get it right, not get it done fast.
Okay, is that, did you want to make a specific motion?
Then I move to consider this levy for August twenty-eighteen.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a first and second, a move to amend the motion as it exists. Does anybody else want to speak to the amendment? Bruce?
It is, I think, in support of Wendy's point. It is correct that staff has had to make revisions to the numbers in this. And that is, is not ideal. However, I have, I think staff's done a good job of articulating to us what the necessary change was because of an assumption that the growth factor applied only to the lid lift and not to the entire levy. And I think that, in addition, as Dave's pointed out, the fact that the levy lid lift has dropped since the last time we saw this gives me, it keeps me from having a concern that the numbers are moving in a direction that would be out of sync with public comment that we've received on this and might cause us to do a reset. So that's, that's point number one. Point number two, the idea of pushing this one year, I think, runs us into the realities of an election year for council. And folks I've talked to have thought, really, if you're going to do that, best to wait two years so that you're not in an election cycle for council seats, which would confound the whole measure. And as, you know, Councilmember Neese had done the early waterfall analysis that showed us that we could patch things together with one-time money. But the implications of that are quite large in terms of taking away, at first, just simply taking away any safety net we have. Second, not, we would be moving in exactly the wrong direction relative to what our outside advisors have told us we ought to be doing with respect to our contingency fund. Rather than taking it from ten percent to seventeen percent, we'd be taking it from ten percent downward. And so, in my opinion, we have done, and staff has done sufficient work, especially in light of the outside consultants' review of everything, to reach us, to bring us to the point where the time is now to go ahead and put this to the voters rather than to wait and spend down reserves in an effort to further fine-tune this before we let the voters decide.
Benson?
I'm going to speak against the motion. I, I think, I will differ with Councilmember Wyker. I think the community has been engaged for quite a period of time. The city council has actually been engaged quite a bit of time. I will agree with Councilmember Bassett that, yeah, and everybody. I mean, we've gotten a flurry of different versions, but they really are fine-tuning of the numbers and, you know, they have gone down. And so I, I think the process, you know, sometimes it's not as good as you'd like to see it, but it has been going on for quite a while. So I will differ with your characterization of that. And I think that, as I said before, I think it's important to let the voters decide. And I think the time is the right time now, so.
Okay, I'm going to take a crack at it. Yeah, I do appreciate that it's been, shall we say, an intense few weeks. And I think we all anticipated that. I know I fielded a number of questions from the public and fellow council members as far back as May, saying, "Wow, it looks like you're backing up against some deadlines." And I think we acknowledge that perhaps while not ideal, it was the way the cards were laid on the table. In some senses, the management partners being able to present on July tenth. But I think we all walked into that with eyes wide open. I would also emphasize that the very reason that we had the public hearing, that we've had public appearances, that we've received emails and had these conversations in various places in our day-to-day lives, is in order to refine, is to refine and better tighten the language. So the changes that we see this week, as city managers called out, were discussed actually last week, to a large extent, in terms of the parks and the maintenance, reiterating and ensuring that we would be ring-fencing those mental health counselors, et cetera. So it's part of a natural progression in terms of coming to the end and the final reading, very much as we've done with other significant bodies of work, be it residential code, be it town center code. So to me, you know, there's sort of that, that growing tension and the final need to make a decision, but it's also very natural and it was anticipated. The second thing that I would say is, it's not only about going the wrong direction, at least for me, insofar as those reserves, it's also about potentially handcuffing us with regard to working capital. I would say that there's one thing that this community has been consistently advocating, and that is commuter parking. And the extent to which we look at drawing down the limited reserves we have to pay for operating costs rather than help fund, whether short-term or perhaps even long-term, some of the commuter parking initiatives we have facing us in the town center would be in contrast, if not contradiction, to what I feel I'm pretty confident our public is expecting us to do. Some of those monies we need to make sure that we can do all the work that it will take to get those two properties and to get them assembled. So those are some of the reasons where, you know, why I feel, in addition to what Councilmember Bassett and Wong have articulated, that now is really the time. I do feel that this has been going on, not for months, not for weeks, but arguably for years, and some of those dates are even here in the wherethes clauses. So I won't be supporting the delay. I want to pause. Saleem, if you're still on the line, did you want to make any comments, or you?
Thanks. Turns out four-thirty in the morning is the vacuoting hour here in Geneva, so I'll keep it short. You know, I'll say that if anybody is interested in my in-depth views, they should go back to the July tenth meeting and watch it about the two-hour mark when we, we had this discussion, when this topic was really floated for the first time. I, I think it's critically important to look at from where we've come and what we know. And what we know is that we've, we've started a number of budget cycles, a number of fiscal years now, we're starting fund balances and finished with really insignificant surpluses. And they're only surpluses to the extent that we've got the beginning fund balances wrong at this point. And so I think that while we look at a structural deficit and we say ourselves, we have a problem that we can't solve in, in a less painful way, it really is time to go to the voters. And I wouldn't support any other option than to finish this long kind of public engagement process. It's been, I can't even imagine the countless hours of staff time that have gone into the presentations, the documentation. It's a messy process. It's one that changes. We've, we've had, just in the time that we've been discussing this, I think, four forecast versions, all of which have changed significantly. And not because the numbers have been forecast different, it's just that we have struggled to find a path forward that wasn't this. And to me, this is the time, the best time, to go to the voters and ask, "Do you want to maintain these levels of services?" Because it's very clear that we haven't forgotten something here. It, it, it's going to be one of the things that we look back on and we say, "If we didn't, if we hadn't have done it when we did it, we really missed the boat." This is a golden opportunity because we do have a path forward of two years of funding, albeit not a good one and not one that I would, that I would support. But now is the time.
Thank you. Dave?
So, so just the, the final comment on this is that I think we should make it clear that the council is not putting a tax burden. We're not voting tonight saying we're, we're putting a tax burden on the citizens. What we're doing is we have come up with what we think is our best effort of a package that covers the operating costs of the city. The city has operational costs, whether it's mowing lawns or counseling children or taking care of the ballfields of the school on behalf of the district, or making sure the water is pure or making sure the sewage goes where it's supposed to go. So it's, it's just the basic operations. We're not building any new buildings. We're not doing anything new. We're continuing those operations. And I think the thing that we've done is put together a package that makes the most sense, and we're giving the voters a chance to decide. I think the, the bad decision would be not giving people the opportunity to decide. If they don't want it, don't vote for it, and we'll figure that out, too. That will mean some significant, really significant cuts to the, to the city's operations, but if that's the direction people want to go, that's okay. As I've, you know, said, I think in my first year, it's not our seven-people city, it's all twenty-two-thousand-people city. And they've got to decide what it is they want. And, you know, if we get to the point where they say, you know, "We've, we've looked at it, we've looked at the CAG recommendation, we've looked at the objective feedback from the consultants that verify the numbers, and we don't think that's the way to go," then they can, they can vote it down and we'll figure out what to do then. And those, that what-to-do-then plan will be, I think, shocking to most islanders. But that's the direction that we'll go, and that's okay, too. But to not give people a chance to weigh in with their voice, that, to me, would be the mistake. To say that we haven't, you know, we've rushed the process or there hasn't been enough public process, then I, you know, you haven't been at the same meetings that I've been at because I think that we've gotten some good feedback that, that people appreciate the depth, particularly with the CAG group, how, how much work that CAG group did and how we were able to surface some of that information. So again, all we're doing is giving people a chance to make their own decision, and that's how this whole system works.
Great, thank you. Counsel, are we ready for a vote on the amended motion? All in favor of the amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So, I meant, Saleem, did you want to vote?
Yeah, the phone cut out, so I, obviously I support it.
You, you, actually, you're not supporting, I believe you are not supporting the amended motion.
This is to wait a year, Saleem.
Do you support waiting a year?
No.
Okay. I think we'll, Ally, are we good taking that as a nay? Okay. So we're back to the original motion. Tom? Please.
I, I'm, I've listened to hundreds of people around the island and sat in a lot of the CAG meetings. I respectfully have listened to all of the thoughts that have been brought out here tonight. And I agree with Wendy. It feels like this proposal is being brought forward at the eleventh hour. Even tonight amongst ourselves, there continues to be confusion regarding the proposal, the sustainability plan. Or better stated, the cost containment plan is still a vision as compared to reality. If the proposal moves forward and passes, the community could lose in the long run as voters may be less inclined to trust us in the future. And I think that we have bigger financial needs out there that we haven't discovered yet. And many of them we have discovered, whether it's the infrastructure and the pipes or traffic or, or other areas. And we know that there's a real need for money to support our parks and other required infrastructure. So, and then, as we heard tonight from a city manager, and she's messaged us several times, that there's likely to be that capital levy that's going to be coming in the future. So I guess there are too many financial considerations in the out-years that aren't fully understood. We were up against a survey consultant that recognized the, the survey data did not support bringing forward a levy. Even using the survey data, the community perceives the services have been declining over the years, and we can't demonstrate, even during the golden years, that we're sustaining our services. I'd like to see the cost containment plan. And, and Mayor Bertin, you brought up the, the parking that we need money for. And I agree with you. The problem is, we still don't have a plan to address the parking or the levels of service. And we don't actually know how much money we need from a financial perspective. So my, my opinion is, this is kind of a Band-Aid fix. And Deputy Mayor Neese pointed out that he couldn't imagine how many hours have been spent bringing this forward. And I agree with him. There's been a ton of effort bringing this tax proposal forward. My question is, are we spending the resources in the right area? And until we can answer that question, I don't feel as though I can in good conscience bring forward any tax increases or property tax increases to voters. So I guess, just in summary, I just don't feel it would be prudent. And I feel like we were doing the community a disservice by trying to, to use your phrase from earlier, Bruce, Councilmember Bassett, by, by jamming it in here.
Okay. Well, I did actually speak against the ballot or the amendment. I'd like to, like to speak for the motion as presented. And I will be honest, I have a few pages worth of things I want to say, so can all settle in. And that is basically that tonight's decision to potentially place a general-purpose property tax measure in the ballot is, I believe, the outcome of a robust and democratic process in which islanders, those who are most vested in the outcome, have had a significant say in the future of their community. The formulation of this particular levy has been underpinned by exhaustive work. Early on, we had a diverse set of residents convened and interest groups queried in order to capture new thinking and perspectives. The city executed a statistically meaningful community survey, assessing satisfaction with the level and quality of services to help craft the solution. It did not definitively say that we should not go out to the public. Substantial amounts of data were reviewed, including financials, trend and forecast analysis, and existing policy. An external consultant was brought in to assess the findings and provide best practices. And throughout this, there's been an important and underlying theme that I feel has threaded the community dialogue, both pro and con. And that is the need or the recognition of the need for additional monies to support our general fund and YFS services. Not largely been questioned. The discussion is centered more on how we preserve our quality of life and in what order we would take certain steps to preserve that quality of life. Balancing calls for additional funds have been reasonable calls for more certainty that the city and council would supplement or balance any new revenues with cost-cutting measures, efficiency initiatives, and long-term financial sustainability. The council has done so with this motion. Second, as dense and extended as the process has been, it's also yielded some of the best of what messy, cumbersome democracy can produce, which is actually better thinking, better outcomes by incorporating diverse views and opinions along the way. I've heard from many residents, as have other fellow council members, via email at Starbucks, you know, via phone and here in council chambers. And it all has mattered, and it has all contributed and helped shape where I feel that we are tonight. So here's a few key examples of how I think tonight's ordinance is actually better product and differs from some of the original ideas. Because I think it's important to understand that we have listened and we have incorporated those diverse perspectives. The first one is, concerned CAG and community members asked for more certainty that the city would implement cost-saving measures and efficiency cuts. The ordinance actually does require both. We offer the community just not an increase in revenues but an ongoing commitment to the financial stability and viability of this amazing community. The community and city will begin research and conversations not just about the services that we deliver, but how we deliver them, looking at new models, new technologies, and new processes. We all know times have changed, technology has a new role to play. And moving forward, staff is going to be required to investigate new ways to provide services, such as our police, youth and family services, potentially court services, just to name a few. We have to be flexible and adaptive and leverage those new tools. Conditions within this ordinance will actually move, keep us moving forward as a city, rather than stagnating in past practices. Third, the island's unique, if not defining, social services are ring-fenced. We have heard from so many people that those mental health counselors are super, super important. Again, the ordinance does ring-fence and confirms those level of services for the next six years. And this is about securing what we have and what we value overall, which is the park's safety, social and emotional well-being of the community as a whole. Community members have expressed concerns that the levy would fund new or unmandated programs or disproportionately grow the city's headcount. Again, it defines the headcount at the current levels. It doesn't mean that there may not be reallocations to newer, more important services based on efficiencies or priorities. But the new funds will not grow the city staff and the new funds will not grow new programs. Super important. So the process, in my mind, has been incredibly robust. It's been occasionally messy, as I think we've particularly seen these last few weeks. But it's been-- but it's been exhaustive, constructive, and I think in the best spirit of island politics, centered around what has brought us all here and what has us all committed to preserving in the years to come. So, with that, I fully support the motion, thank the community and staff, and look forward to the dialogue in the months to come. All right. Counsel, are you ready for a vote? All in favor of the motion as presented signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes, 5-2. Thank you. So, we have another motion.
Move to appoint the pro and con committee members as recommended.
Counsel, any discussion? I would just note, and in particular, thank Councilmember Ackerman for his input on the con committee, it was appreciated. All in favor signify-
And I would thank those pro and con committee volunteers, in particular, those who will now actually be serving.
Well said, well said. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Great. So, those are the pro and con committees. All right. I feel like there should be something more to be said in that sense. But there doesn't have to be, because it's 7:45. Okay, so we now, and thank you to the audience, and thank you to everyone who's been with us this evening. We now move on to other business. Are there any upcoming council member absences to report? I'm just confirming that I will be gone for the August 7th meeting, and you will be in the very capable hands of Deputy Mayor Neese.
And I will be gone as well.
All right, so we are three down.
Cutting out early, so maybe we should cancel.
So, we have three who will be gone and one who will be leaving early. I would say, why don't the deputy mayor and myself have a conversation with city leadership to determine whether or not to hold the 7th, the August 7th meeting or reschedule?
Just make sure you have a meeting with him at 4:00 in the morning.
Because, my 4:00 in the morning or his?
His.
Probably my turn.
Have counsel, if you, Mayor, may I, has the council already made plans for the August 21st canceled meeting? You remember, that's currently on the planning schedule as canceled, and I'm just wondering, can we flip it?
Counsel.
You're asking if we're available on that night?
Yes.
Could I, I'm going to get there and look, but could I also ask what the issues that are on the calendar for August 7th?
Yes, thank you.
Maybe, Julie, you could speak to the time sensitivity of those?
Yes. We have a code compliance amendment ordinance, that's, there's no real urgency on that. I think that has just made its way through the Planning Commission, now it's back to the council for review. It's the evening in which we are hoping to finalize a RFQ criteria and the RFQ process for the commuter parking and mixed-use project at the Tully's Parcel 12 site. And then, just learned that we need a YFS appropriation for donations that are coming into the city, and you have to actually appropriate those, and that would be an item on consent. But those are the three items at the moment, so.
Well, question, if we were to push out the meeting two weeks, would that then push out the RFQ process two weeks?
Yes, Mayor. We would modify the schedule and bring that back to you, but.
Is there a chance we can keep the meeting to an hour?
There's always that potential.
Or start early.
Or start early. We could start at 6:00.
Yeah, actually.
So, national night out, start, it is national night out.
You lose your quorum at 8:00. Yeah, so.
So, national night out.
It starts at 5:00.
Starts at 5:00, so if the meeting were from 6:00 until 8:00, which, looking at the agenda, seems reasonable.
So, 6:00 to 8:00 and cut out code compliance?
Or you could keep it, I suspect, but.
I'd probably start with RFQ and then, yeah, do the code compliance second.
I believe I'm not available on the 21st, to go back to that question.
I am not available.
No, okay.
So, we just move the problem. So, I think, so we're saying that we will keep the August 7th meeting, move it to 6:00.
Okay.
So, you can do an hour of national night out, start with the RFQ, get through that, and then code compliance would be optional.
Okay.
Great.
I'm not sure I can be here by 7:00, but I will find out.
You need to be-
Please use your microphone, staff, or counsel.
I'm not sure I'll be here by 6:00, I can be here by 7:00.
Just call it in.
And I can.
Can you confirm that? Because that could be determinative for a quorum.
Yeah, I will find out.
Okay, great. Are there any other upcoming council member absences, or now, I think, looking into September? September, October? Planning schedule? Julie?
Mayor, I think you covered the main item there that I wanted to make sure we had. We do need to have one meeting in August.
Okay. Great. We don't have counsel.
On planning calendar?
Yep.
Excuse me, Julie, I'd sent you an email about this, but I just wanted to highlight it for the rest of the council as well. So, it's a year ago or so, or maybe even more, the council directed staff to go ahead and create an ordinance around knotweed and the concept that we would make that something that homeowners who had infestations had to actually eradicate. And I, and sitting on the Open Space Conservancy Trust Board, thank you, Mr. Wiesentiner, I had the chance to speak to Paul about where that stands, and that made me realize it's actually not a parks issue, because we're talking about private property, it's a private property issue, which made me realize that it's an issue that sort of has been adrift since that time. So, my request would be that we somehow have that find its way back into the list of things that we're trying to get done. Council's already made the decision.
That was part of the residential code, I believe. Yeah, because I think we had a-
If you say so. It's long ago that I don't recall.
It's my understanding, both, we went back and looked at the council media minutes when Councilmember Bassett brought this to my attention, it was totally off my radar. It looks like the direction from the council was for us to prepare a work plan regarding, maybe the work plan is the ordinance, but at this point, it didn't make it on your council goals, and so that would need to be on there. And then, timing-wise, it's a little tricky. I know we've included some language in the residential code that gets new construction, remember that? But I think what you're identifying is private property as is now, right? Okay.
Well, it's any homeowner that has an infestation of it.
Irrespective of whether or not there's a construction.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with construction.
Right, separate from construction.
Eradicate it, yes.
Yeah.
So, what you're suggesting is that we contemplate it at our next planning session?
No, not so much as, it fell off the radar and didn't make it onto our work plan, which is why it fell off my radar, on the council work plan.
So, it sounds like there's more work to be done in terms of figuring out what actually the next steps or the action is and the timing of.
I know we had a subsequent conversation, very brief about it, in which, if I recall correctly, the, I'd said, well, what's next? And staff said, council's already given us direction to do this. And so, it was to staff's hands at that point, if I recall correctly.
You're right, it has absolutely, I take ownership of it, thawing off the work plan.
Yeah, no, and I'm by no means intending to, you know, sort of-
And I think-
Cudgel you with it. It's more just, how do we gracefully get it to move forward, rather than be lost for eternity?
We have our one-on-one, so maybe we can talk offline on how to do that, and then I'll send that to the council.
It sounds like we need to both understand what the expectation is, and then what the timing associated with it would be.
I'm concerned about the timing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, one-on-one conversation, sounds like a fine spot. Counsel, just be aware, I'll-
You're going to stay on it?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to bird-dog this a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else from any other council members? So, none, the meeting is now adjourned.